Gets out about that cake, we'll get bigger crowds.
I could do a contract with her.
You could. I would just put her on the menu for next year.
Okay. Moving on to item eight, which is correspondence, and I don't think we have any, so we can do one. Item number nine is committee reports, and we do have one that we need to pull before we discuss. And that is fifteen twenty regarding nomination and election of board officers. That needs more work. Good all. Need a motion?
So move.
Second. Okay. Any discussion we've got in there? These are probably the numbers that we threw at me, but we've had some time to be able to look at and review them. So second meeting to accept them as presented. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or an extension? Okay, motion carried.
Do we have a date on the next review of them? Did we put a timeline on that when we would take a look at them next?
We basically said that we were going through them, that we figured that anything older than four or five years is, needs to be reviewed.
Very good. Thank you.
And also keep in mind that the subscription through Bosse's also keeps us pretty up to date with those that need to be.
That's correct.
With the language has been changed.
It does. Yeah.
Right. It's just that when I looked it through the policy manual and I found some of it were two thousand and two.
Yeah.
It was time to take a look at them again.
Oh, inspiring.
Okay. All right. All right, Douglas, you have a Bosse's report for us?
Not particularly. We're obviously closing down and dealing with multiple graduations at this point in time. We have hit a bit of a snag with the building project, which is most unfortunate. We thought we had a solution. And it turns out that because Ithaca did not submit their paperwork with everyone else for the building project, it's not gonna fly as it stands right now. I don't know what, what on earth we can do to get it moving. It certainly has put the rush on getting to Albany and having many of our Bosse's board meetings speak with their legislators about the fact that this is ridiculous. You know, it makes it impossible. And quite frankly, the building we need worked on the most, just the one in which our fragile students are housed. Anyway, an issue. So between graduations and the building project, we're
You're busy.
We're busy, as usual. CNYSVA, you could give the report probably as well as I could. Jane and I both went to the dinner this year, which was, the speech was given by, oh, now I'm going brain dead. Great, which is not on your government.
It is. Without superintendent.
Ithaca High School.
Superintendent.
Superintendent, and it was, it was amazing. Huge crowd. I think one of the largest member, membership events we've ever had. It was really exciting. And a lot of members recognized, which was great.
Yeah, you did a nice job. You did. In a very nice place.
We're very scared.
And moving on to administrators' reports?
I asked the administrators, John, Jeannie, Josh, and Angie, just very briefly, because we know things can go a long time in our board meetings, but very briefly, kind of just talk about the highlights from this past year, what they're looking forward to next year, and some of the challenges. So let's start with Jeannie, because she didn't get talked about much in that last presentation, and she's the foundation.
I thought, we were curious to see who we were gonna pick first. That's why we were like, we looked at first.
Let's do, yeah, you didn't have any idea.
Well, I have, I have several things that I was really proud of this year that I think our staff would also share. First was the day of service that Megan was referring to. That was a really special day that took a lot of time and effort to put together, but really helped the students pick a project that would serve their community, and they had a lot of voice in that, a lot of choice in how it was going to go. And then on the day that we had all of our service projects, having everyone in the building wearing the same shirt just created so much unity for the building. And they're actually still using the shirts, like today was fourth grade field days, and the fourth graders all wear their shirts today. And they're gonna wear them again when they go on a field trip to Genesee Country Museum on Friday. So it's just a really, it was a really nice sense of community and unity for the school.
Would that be just perhaps having school uniforms?
To, uh, having school uniforms? I don't know that they would like that. I just, and that really, we couldn't have done without Joe's help, without the help of a lot of people in the community who, you know, we decided to mulch the playground, and they say, let's ask Joe. I mean, that's a big deal to come up with all of the things that were necessary for each project, so. So that was the first thing. Also, the pre-K program, this is our second year, and it's another really successful year. We continue to reflect and assess what we're doing and change things, and it just keeps getting better. So really proud of that program. And we also, one of the things I think we're starting to do, this is kind of, I'm proud of, but it's also a goal to continue, is to look at how the standards that our pre-K students, we're using with our pre-K students, and how they relate to the standards for the kindergarten students, and how we're seeing our pre-K students moving into kindergarten with more skills, and what we need to adjust, and having a lot of conversations between the teams, because we have to, we have to adjust because they're coming in so much.
That's great.
That's a good problem to have.
We have a summer project planned with Jen Gondik from Bosse's to, with the pre-K team and the kindergarten team, because the new standards are also coming out, so to look at those standards and talk about that. Jeannie and I have been excited about it, kind of talking about it. South Seneca heard that and is gonna join in on the conversation too, so I think it's, it's just exciting to have that good problem, you know?
And I'm really excited about the summer academy that we're going to offer students. I think having four weeks where students can keep reading and writing and doing math is gonna make such a huge difference when they come back in the fall. So I'm really hoping this is gonna be really successful and that we can continue to have it. So we will be sharing information with you about that as it goes over the summer. Goals. We had a conversation this year that Angie and I started with all the teachers about homework. There's a lot of, you know, happening with homework in education and talking about what is the value, what's the intention. Families are really busy at night with sports and want, you know, to focus on family time, so why do we do homework? Is it for the right reasons? Is it the right amount? Do we have the right guidelines around it? So those are conversations we've been having this year that we want to continue. Several of the local elementary schools in our region have decided to have no homework at their elementary schools. So we're gonna be looking to see what other people are doing and continue those conversations. And connect to what the middle school's doing so that it makes sense. So as we start to figure that out, we're gonna be sharing there. And also, we do this every year, but we're gonna continue to look at the, our RTI program. We have a summer curriculum project this summer to look at our assessment schedule, to look again at how we can make it the most efficient possible, least amount of time for kids being assessed and being out of instruction, so. To again, look at that and make it, you know, as intentional and efficient as possible. That's the elementary school.
Josh, could guess your next?
Yep. So this is always difficult to try to narrow things down and stay concise, because we're just proud of the work my staff does. Three areas where this year I felt that the team was trail, kind of trailblazing, checking into some unknown areas and did a phenomenal job was the, going with the media literacy class and turning over the community read to the community learning, being a student-led activity. It was a really well thought-out process this year with this, the kid president. The students developed a whole day of activities for their peers, and it was extremely well received. Sixth grade team is blazing the trail for project-based learning, and they did the would you drink this activity. And again, the kids went through all of the engineering design process, and they came up with lots. It was really the conversations they had when bopped into, while they were testing their filters that were the most meaningful, because they were troubleshooting with each other around their projects and how they can make them work better, or why they were getting the results they were getting. No one was drinking anything at the end of it, but maybe we have some young entrepreneurs who will refine the process going forward. And the local board program, and I can't say enough good things about Melissa Bryant and her team, and what they have done this year, just exploring all the options that they can to get the students involved in aspects of the building, and preparing food, working with the staff and the community, the hoop house. And really look forward to next year where they're, they're looking to go from big ideas now back into the details of the work and aligning even tighter, more closely with the standards and assessments and curricular area. So that's exciting. As a building, this, this past year, the whole staff is a lot more focused with having conversations around high-quality learning, assessment, and feedback for students, and that's piggybacking off of the work of the elementary school with homework conversations and grading aligned to standards, the standard-based report cards. And that work is, this year has just been the foundation. We want to move beyond the matrix work next year and work with the universal backwards design and central questions guiding our classes, six, five, six, seven, and eight, as well as aligning our assessments to the standards so that we have something that is much more deliberate in our conversations with parents, how to support their, their students as they learn, areas where they have strengths and areas where they have some challenges. Building-wide, we also, this is work with the elementary high school in the district, is the Blueprint for Success, where we are exploring, or we are in the process of developing our action plan for helping staff better support all learners, specifically students with disabilities in the classroom setting. And we have a lot of work to do this summer in line with that, and I think it's gonna pay dividends in the long run.
And speaking of that, we have a summer curriculum day with all three buildings together, working on our blueprint plan and making, you know, continuing.
And our goals, three specific goals. We are looking to expand and deliberately focus our RTI interventions for our students. Next year, we have literacy, math, and we're adding writing labs. So we'll be able to provide those with the addition of the, the second half literacy specialist that's gonna allow us to tailor our groups even more specifically to the specific skills that the students struggle with in those RTI classes, so that they are, instead of trying to meet the needs of three or four different deficiencies, that we're really focused in on one specific area. Well, it's an opportunity to redeem our, our slow implementation of PLCs next year too. If we end up appointing or approving the teacher contract and add the team leader position, it's a real, real opportunity to have that focused leadership at the middle school team level to help us looking at student data and responding in a more timely fashion to providing students with interventions at the classroom level, not just waiting till we had five-week, ten-week report cards. And my personal goal for the building is I'd love to have a lot more parent and student voice or involvement in our shared decision-making, because there's a lot of really great ideas out there, and we just have to provide them a platform to get them involved in a more meaningful way, because it is their building, it's not our building. Throw the ball to John or Angie. It's your turn.
I just wanna make sure someone mentions the big PBL workshop this summer, so someone can ask.
I was gonna just, but.
Just go. You're good.
So this year, again, I, I will sort of piggyback what Josh said, which is it's kind of hard to pick out one or two things, but I really am proud that it was a great year overall, behaviorally, academically. It's just been a very smooth year, which is always nice as a principal to not get hit with a lot of bricks. Our focus this year was on college and career readiness. We spent a lot of time talking about that. We hired a new counselor at the beginning of the year with the goal of increasing that area and our focus on that area. I feel like we've made a lot of gains. It was a good first year for that position, and I feel Renee is the perfect person for that position. We really hit one out of the park when we hired her. She's been just dynamic. I know she spends a lot of time at the middle school, so she's developing the future of the program, not just focusing on the seniors. She's really looking at the long-term and how that will have implications for our kids. We had our first handful of senior projects completed. We've had kids do internships for the first time formally through our school. We've had lots of kids do internships before through Bosse's, but to really have kids do a very intentional internship experience through our building this year was great. We increased our college credit. We expanded our College Now program. We've got additional courses that kids are earning credit in. In fact, some courses have added additional credit. We have one, for example, one of our math courses is going from three credits to eight credits next year because of really clarifying the alignment with the college curriculum. So it's really wonderful for our kids, and they will see even more credit next year because of the work that was done this year. What's that? College Precalculus. So it's now, it's now an eight-credit class. So it's really exciting.
I think that'll become even more important, John, especially since New York has moved to tuition-free state schools starting in the fall. We could see not only increased participation in kids going to two- and four-year SUNY schools, but maybe a slight shift in, from private to SUNY schools. And now that you're moving towards, you know, the seniors having twenty, twenty-five, thirty credits to be able to say that.
They're going in as a sophomore.
Yeah. It's great.
So, so that's been a success. Moving, looking towards next year, again, so again, piggybacking on what Josh was talking about with that Blueprint for Success, our focus has really been on RTI. Obviously, with the new positions that you've heard and you've approved through the budget process, having a new special ed, an additional special ed teacher. We're actually thrilled to have on tonight's agenda an appointment of a teacher who's certified in both math and special education, so we're actually hiring someone who will be working with our students in special ed, in math, who is actually certified in math. So that's a thrill. Really focusing our hiring on getting people that have that content experience. So that will really improve our program. Over the last few years, you know, as we made that case in the budget process, you know, we've seen the need increase, but the staffing has been more spread out. So being able to get folks that are really focused on a specific content and working together will be, with the departments, will be really, really awesome for our special ed and our RTI program. The other, or a related RTI thing that I wanted to bring up, this is that we've added in the budget time and money for teachers to get together with our grade-level teams to review all students coming in with special education needs and disabilities, not just IEP, but 504 as well. So each, each grade-level team that we have will have an opportunity to really review and prep for their students coming in so that they know what to expect September sixth, instead of waiting until October to really kind of figure out what they need. So the previous year's teams will be sharing with the next year's teams and making sure that that continuity of service is, is supported there.
And we're doing that for K-12?
Yeah, that's a, that's a K-12 thing. And then the last thing that I would mention is just the number, the number of teachers and the enthusiasm behind PBL. And again, that's a K-12, and I'll use that as the transition to Angie.
So we're very excited to be offering two four-day workshops. Each series is four days long for Project-Based Learning 101 here on campus. We're even more excited that it's led by three in-house teachers. We had a teacher in each building really step up and voluntarily step up into a teacher leader role. They've been working with a coach from OCM Bosse's and going to their own trainings, doing their own project-based learning projects for some of them a year, some of them two or three years, and have really stepped up to play and offered to train many, many teachers. It's kind of exploded. Our goal was to have, like in our three-year plan, is to have every teacher in Truanceburg trained in project-based learning. Certainly, I think for a while in our way, we have fifty teachers signed up to come to one of those four-day workshops.
Yeah, how many do you think?
Fifty. So we only have two different offerings too. One's at the last week of June, and one is early August. So we have Gail Versam, Karen Randall, and Pat Edwards are working with each other, and the coach from OCM to run those very, very well-planned and well-thought-out four-day workshops with the goal of every teacher that attends one of those will have a project ready to go for next school year. So now we're at the point where we're working on supports for next year. Yeah, it's really awesome. Like, our goal is to have every teacher, and then we like checked enrollment on our learning plan, and we're like, oh my God, there's thirty-eight teachers enrolled for the June workshop. Maybe we should cap it at a certain number, so. The enthusiasm out there, teachers kind of took it upon themselves to register the teams too. So maybe like the whole first grade team's coming to the June one, maybe high school science is coming to the August one. We have a great representation. It's almost equal across the three buildings. We have special area teachers, we have counselors, we have classroom teachers, really just a nice sampling of people coming to the trainings. So we're excited about that. Kind of to piggyback on the RTI thing that we have, I've been working with our related service providers, so speech and OT, to really kind of try and firm up an RTI model for our related services as well, kind of even starting with that, what are we gonna do to evaluate students versus screen students? And then what's our lower level? Are we gonna push into classes a little bit, you know, as opposed to pulling students out for small groups? So we're really just at the beginning phase of that. That was driven from the therapist wanting to do that, so I'm excited next year to continue. They want to have regular meetings as related service to talk about those types of things. So that kind of piggybacks in the whole RTI theme. Something that I'm really excited about is we are the only district in TST not to be on the waitlist for services for preschool. Remember, as a school district, we don't cover those services, but we arrange all those services, and the county pays for them, but the school district is in charge of finding all of those services. So we probably have between thirty and forty students between the age three and five that receive, you know, speech therapy or occupational therapy, and every month they come out with a waitlist, and I work very, very hard to, for us not to have a waitlist here. We have good relationship with therapists, we have great UPK and Head Start teachers to work with, so our kids who are eligible for services are really getting their services. Which just helps with that, what Jeannie was saying, our kids coming into kindergarten are coming in so strong. Also very proud of, and this is just small, but it really was just a wonderful success. There was a program that was offered through TST Bosse's called Learning Ally. It's an audiobook site. I mean, there's been a million audiobook sites, but this is kind of like the top-of-the-line audiobook site. TST Bosse's purchased a contract with them, and it was made available to districts. I came back and rolled that out to each of the buildings, and it's just had, it's kind of like taken off, like classroom teachers, parents. It's a web-based audiobook site that parents can access at home. It's an app that you can use in classrooms, and we're finding great success. Like, they even found the two thousand and four bio textbook that they're using. They found it on the site, so if students, you know, were loaded down with homework, I mean, you know, the student can read, but they wanted to listen to it as an audio. It also has a visual with it, a highlighted text. It has a lot of really neat features. So it's something that we've, we're using in all three buildings, and I just hear tons of positive feedback. So just a little thing, but. Let's see, my personal goals for next year, one would be, another part of this position is residency in McKinney-Vento with our homeless students. I'd really like to firm up some policies and, I shouldn't say policy, procedures for that. You know, really get a system in place for looking at residency across the buildings and certifying McKinney-Vento. Just kind of getting some continuity between that and taking it out as a district office. So that's one of my personal goals, is to kind of start that this summer, start some procedures for residency in McKinney-Vento. I'm excited to really take on the leadership role in the special ed department meetings in each building. I really hear that is a need for information sharing, for professional development, for regulations. My time will now be freed up to be able to do that across the three buildings, and I think that's just a wonderful avenue to be able to share so many. I mean, like Learning Ally would be one teeny little example of what you could roll out to different buildings.
Do you anticipate any changes in, more or less, in regulations these days?
Oh, there's always changes in regulations. I don't think anything major. I mean, the standards are changing now. We have the every student succeeds, so like the title grant's changing with that, but nothing major coming down. My other personal goal would be to, I kind of want to spend what I would call like a day in the life in each grade. Like, I'd really like to be out in classrooms, not doing observations, not in CSE meetings, but what's it like to be a fifth grader going through the co-taught schedule? What's it like to be a ninth grader in fifteen-one classes? Just kind of getting out there a little bit more, and you know, really making that a goal to do early in the year.
This summer's gonna be busy.
Summer's very busy.
With the new contract, there'll be lots of opportunities for teachers to continue that same professional development work that we used to call summer curriculum all the way through the next year. So it's good to hear.
I just have a question about technology. Maybe that's like, but just tech, just technology, you know, with one-on-one.
We're switching to Chromebooks next year. So that's, my, my life the last few days, aside from the senior trip this past weekend, was collecting iPads so that they can be repurposed and, and, back to the mic, but the teachers have all received their Chromebooks and thanks to Mike's efforts. So the teachers are getting used to and getting familiar with their Chromebooks now, so.
And we're both getting more. So all my third and fourth grade classrooms will have class sets of Chromebooks. Right now they have ten in a class, but they'll have twenty in a class, and a number of iPads, and we're increasing in all the classrooms.
We're gonna be pretty, we'll be on the horizon of the one-to-one in the classroom. Probably, not this year, but next year, it will be full one-to-one. But not sending them wrong to children.
Thank you.
Do you want to talk about, briefly about our student representative for next year, and kind of talk about process and announce the name of the board?
So our student, so every year we elect a student board member, and the process is actually very similar to that, what you guys go through to be elected. The students submit a petition to me. I, it starts out with our social studies teachers talking about your role as an advocate in government and getting involved. And usually, the eleventh grade social studies teachers will talk to their students about the opportunity to be the student board member in your senior year. I put out announcements over the, for a couple of weeks about if you want to become a student board member, pick up a, uh, what do they call it now?
Petition.
Yeah, petitions. So we put those, we put those out there. The kids come in and pick them up. They turn them in in my office. And what happens, what I've noticed happens, is the kids sort of self-select. This year, we, we only had one student complete a petition. There were a couple of students that picked them up, but then after they had talked it through with each other, only one of them actually turned it in. So they, the group sort of said, well, you should, you should definitely be the one to do it. So, so I'm excited to share that Grace Heptick, who will be a senior next year, will be our student board member. And she's already come to my office to pick up the calendar for the board meeting, so she can plan ahead and be here. And we talked a lot about her role as being an advocate for the student perspective, and that it's once, that it's important to try to get past the intimidation factor and feel comfortable to contribute, because I think the student perspective is really, really important. So, so Grace is excited about that, and I think she will be a great student board member next year.
Maybe we should coordinate with her about having her come through a portion, one end of the other of our retreat that was this summer, just so she does go through, and we can have one on Facebook.
Well, she knows about the summer meetings. She knows about the reorg meeting in July, so she's planning to attend that.
Anything from Joe?
He's gonna report later. He is, he's ongoing summer.
All the fun stuff happens.
It's crazy this time of the year. We have a facilities meeting on Thursday. We do, we do?
We do.
We do?
We do.
Sound like calendar. It's this Thursday, right? Can I lose a week?
No, it's just, no one can make them anymore, so I, even though the board members, we'll talk. We'll get, we'll get back to you here.
Okay.
I didn't think, I didn't think it was gonna happen because I didn't think Frank could make it, or I know Frank can't.
Joe, I just have a quick question.
Sure.
I noticed that we've lost a couple of trees over this winter. Do we have a plan or plan to replace them, or?
Replace trees?
Yeah, those are the ones that are clearly dead shoulders.
Um, no plan. We should just go.
We, we have taken a lot of the dead trees out. Are there still some left out there out front?
Yeah, there's a couple. But I think that some of the varieties are the ones that leave out late and so you kind of have to wait and wait and wait and then realize that maybe they're not going to make it. All right, thank you. Okay, so we can move on to the consent agenda. Any motion?
So moved.
All right, here. Any questions? Any extension? Thank you. Okay, moving on to new business. And freshly we have an add-on and that is a...
The, the donation. Right. From the middle school student council. Oh, excellent. Okay, so from the middle school student council, donation of $2,813.36, which is quite generous, and that is for the new scoreboard for the middle school field. No, I need a motion?
So moved.
A second? A discussion other than to say thank you?
Thank you.
Wow, that's pretty impressive.
It's for the gym, not the fields. Just, just...
Okay. Well, it's a field.
Oh, I thought they told you the gym.
It's for the gym.
It's for the gym, okay.
Was that, how was that really very...
Field, gym, whatever, okay.
Josh?
Student council activities. Dances and, pretty much dances. We can get the crowd and they come and shake it out. We get every little penny out of our pockets for candy and soda and popcorn, pizza, but they, they have a grand time. So it's one of those things that every student looks to in PE class, in sporting events, and it's really hard to read it because we have one or two light bulbs out here and there at a given time, so.
Or 14 or 20.
Is it the whole cost of the scoreboard or is it a portion of it?
Honestly, they presented a scoreboard to me and I'm like, yeah, that looks great. And that's where I know my...
And I think they've got a donation from the PTO as well. But this was something that the student council identified as they needed the building. They reached out to the vendors, they ended up, I think, talked to six or eight different vendors, narrowed it down to three, and then they got pricing and they met with Joe, they met with myself, and they shared with us what they thought was important to have in the scoreboard and asked for some barn put on it in terms of if we would like to see a logo or if we would like to have it say home or do we want to be able to put in the actual teams' names and have Truman'sburg in who our, our visitors are. And so they took that back then to the student council and reached back out to those vendors to identify which one they wanted to work with.
Which one did they choose?
I don't remember.
Okay.
Sorry, it's not my decision.
That is, that's such, from what you had said earlier, the idea that the student community at the middle school, it's sort of taking, not necessarily ownership, but sharing ownership. And it's also, I think, kudos to you and the staff that are willing to let them make some of those decisions. Sometimes it takes a lot more time to have the kids work on it than just to do it yourself.
They're thoughtful and it's an investment in their building and, and their future because it's not the adults telling what they do. That's how we grow our students.
Excellent, excellent. Okay, so all in favor? Any opposed or tensions? I don't think I said that before motion carry. Okay, moving on to new business, new business A1. And that is we need a motion to create a senior maintenance worker position at one full-time position. Second?
Second.
Okay. And this is to replace Mr. Mayo's position. Okay, do you have any questions? I believe Michael to strike, Bill to sit. All right, all in favor? Any opposed or any extensions?
Jane, can I suggest that we maybe take B through H in a block or do you want to...
I, I had considered that, Carrie, but at the same time, in a public session, I kind of like the idea that we're adding positions and we're adding, we're indicating what the salary position is, we have to be pretty careful. Although it would be more efficient to do it that way. Okay, so moving on to item D, the entry level of pay, and this would be for the senior maintenance worker set at $20.30 per hour. I need a motion?
So moved.
A second? Okay, is this any discussion or clarification? All in favor? Any opposed or any extensions? Okay, motion carried. The end assault of this is, item C is we have to vacate the position for, so I need a motion? A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or any extension? Okay, item D is approval, need a motion for approval to increase the cleaner positions by one full-time person. Second?
Second.
Okay, do you need any additional information or discussion? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed or any extension? Item E is I need a motion for approval to create a microcomputer specialist position at one full-time person.
So moved.
Okay, and Michael, you said this is...
This is actually an employee who was here for several years and then became employed by Cindy Rick or is it OCM? Cindy Rick, the Rick, the Rick. And they are changing their staffing model so that if he, so he would not be able to stay here full-time as he has served from the Rick position the last five years, so we want to absorb him onto our staff.
This is Bruce?
Without saying it publicly, that's what it is.
No, no, it's named.
Yeah, that's it.
All in favor? Any opposed or any extension? Okay. Item F, need a motion to approve the entry level of pay for the microcomputer specialist, which will be $25.86 per hour.
So moved.
Second? Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any extension? Okay. Item G is I need a motion to approve, to create, approve the creation of an audiovisual technician position.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any questions or discussion?
This, this also relates to the Rick changing their staffing model. We had someone sort of kind of, and it didn't work out, and so now we want to absorb that position onto our staff. We think we'll be able to be more efficient with the expenditure and the work that's performed.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed or any questions? Okay, item H is approval for the entry level of pay for the audiovisual technician and that will be stated at $20.30 an hour.
So moved.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Okay. Item I, I need a motion to approve, sign an agreement for interim school business administrator. And this would be with this Lauren...
Polman.
Polman?
Polman.
Oh, Polman, sorry. For the interim school business administrator beginning July 10th and continuing through June 30th, 2018.
So moved.
Okay, I think Kimberly, you have mentioned that we were very fortunate, get somebody with her experience.
Yes, absolutely. She's very qualified, comes to us from Rochester School District, many years of experience.
Good, so that was...
Looking at all times.
Almost as seamless.
Yes.
Excellent. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Oops, giving me all two. Item S, and this is I need a motion to sign the Truman'sburg Leadership Association Agreement.
So moved.
Okay, second? Okay, any questions? We had this in our package. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or any extensions? And congratulations and thank you, the Truman'sburg Leadership Association. Good to hang out with you again.
They have really high attendance at board meetings.
I do, yes, they're, almost a hundred, they're almost better than board members, to be perfectly honest. Okay, item P is I need a motion to authorize the signature of signing of the Truman'sburg Teachers Associate Agreement.
So moved.
Okay.
Yeah, I could just mention a couple of things about this. I placed it each board member's chair. The same agreements that I mentioned to you last Monday night in executive session, however, in a different format. And some of the numbers are, have been calculated out, we talked percentages and some other things, they're all calculated out. And this actually represents the end of the May, or the April 27th tentative agreement. Gary and Jane were there for that and this summarizes and contains the sum total of the agreements with the association. Kimberly and I met with Lauren Hastings and Chris Ibert about a week later and reviewed our notes and all, everything that's in our notes and on the April 27th is included in this agreement. So what will happen next is we're, we're working on the language, so you put this into contract language and then hopefully we'll have, with your ratification, the TTA has also ratified, pretty soon we'll have a document that we can put signatures to move forward.
Michael, I didn't see and hear the change from that team time will no longer be considered a academic assignment. Am I missing it? Okay.
Yeah, it's on the back page.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, this is a welcome motion approved. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, and item U, need a motion to sign the 2015-2019 Truman'sburg Support Staff Agreement.
So moved.
Any questions? Michael, do you want to add anything to that?
Well, I think all three of these agreements, well particularly these last two, represent a lot of staff time and board member time to, and well, just everyone's time to try to come to agreement on fair, fair contracts for, that value our employees and work for the district. So these are really good things for our district moving forward, so. And I really appreciate it to the support staff. They, they were reading it and reading it and reading it over the last couple of weeks, so they really know what's in here.
Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I think that's what you call a hat-trick, isn't it?
That's what you call it.
For a drama person, that's impressive.
And also, I think I can say from, on behalf of all of us, the board members, really thank you all, everyone who contributed to putting these, these contracts together. It's been a long time, but I think we've come up with something that we're all, can be quite comfortable and really reflects how much we appreciate our staff.
Yep.
So, can't agree on everything, but we can agree on how much you are appreciated.
Yes.
Okay, brings us to open forum. Which is wide open. So anybody have any comments? Then I entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh!
I do, you can get my glasses, Joe.
Okay, anything for the good of the order?
Michael, we won't miss you. It's been a pleasure working with you.
Yep, yes, a good place, a very good place.
And when is your... When are your last... You were leaving when?
Early, early July. By the time you do your reord meeting, I'll be on my desk watching sunrises. That'll be okay.
You can tune in and send us tweets.
I, I could.
We'll call those second sunrises.
I could.
Just on, on the heels of our last three board motions here, I think particularly on behalf of the board, we want to thank Kimberly and Michael for their hard work over these past five years. This, you took us from a place of financial instability and really difficult times throughout New York State financially and moved us through downsizing and then really, I think, reestablished the direction of, of the district and have now been able to put us on a sustainable path that allows us to approve the contracts that I think generously reflect what the board and the community wants to do to show their appreciation and for our, our support staff and our teachers and our administrators, but that wouldn't have been possible without the two of you doing such an excellent job in both of your capacities. So just thank you.
Thank you.
A lot of walks to return.
A little bit, Jess.